YouTube is streaming live, but the meeting is not. We've got a couple more moments for that, just so everybody's aware. Zoom is now live. Whenever you're ready to start the meeting, it's ready to go. Kathy's joining in now.
Okay, hey, Mary Jo, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the finance committee meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you call the role, please?
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from the April 12th, 2021 meeting. Are there any comments or questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve the minutes. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Saying.
Andy Selhertz.
Approve, yes.
Okay, a couple items under old business, the first of which is Resolution 2021-16. This authorizes the mayor to enter an agreement with McBride Del Clarion, and this is for the updated zoning code. And we had a representative from McBride on in our last meeting to kind of walk us through the process of this. It's a $94,000 expenditure will take up to 18 months to complete. And I had a pretty good discussion last time around. Does anyone on the committee have any additional comments or questions? Okay, all right, that is on second reading this evening. Then next is Ordinance 2021-14, and this is repealing and amending sections of the Codif or City of Brooklyn. And Mr. Butler kind of explained what this was, a lot of language cleanup, things like that from various ordinances that have passed in the past. And so that's what this is involved with. Any comments or questions on this?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just that I did have some questions, and Mr. Butler and I have been going, excuse me, back and forth on this.
Okay, very good. Mr. Butler, do we need to update anything at this point, or we're good?
We're good, Mr. Chair. I am, thank you for asking. I'm asking that council not be in any rush to adopt this particular legislation. We are looking to make sure we get it right. My intention in introducing it was to clean up the codified ordinances to make sure that we weren't duplicating efforts or having anything in the code that was outmoded or outdated. It is possible that if we eliminate certain provisions that I have proposed eliminating, we would do more harm than good. So I want to be absolutely sure that we have all of our bases covered. And that's why I suggest that we don't, we're not in any rush to pass this. We ought to give it a good committee look. And probably I will come back to you with a substitute version, not at this meeting, but the next meeting, that will account for some of that own, some of my own internal review. And based on some of the questions you may ask, and certainly Councilwoman Pucci has asked thus far.
Okay, very good. We'll leave it at that and pick up the discussion on our next meeting then. That sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Sure. All right, we'll go ahead and cover a couple of these other items in here as well to save as much time as we can for committee, the whole meeting. The first one is Resolution 2021-17. This is a pass-through and sale purchase of, with the development agreement with the Kind of Hell Funny Land Realization Corporation. Mayor, did you want to address this, or who did you want to have take this one?
She's not on here at the moment. I don't see her here.
Okay, well, you know what? Then we can just wait for the committee to hold them. That's not a problem unless Jeremy, you wanted to take it.
I think, yeah.
I can.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is a point, just over half an acre property that's located between the houses on the north side of the Apple Creek Drive cul-de-sac in I-71. The owner owes more than $33,000 in back property taxes, so it's been in the process for a while now. The city's expressed an interest in this property, and it's been held up in the state's forfeited land sale. It was, it was canceled last year, and the counties let us know that it's possible. It might not occur this year either. So they encouraged us to reach out to the land bank. And the land bank has the ability to work in different avenues to acquire property that then they can pass along to the city. So that's what this development agreement does.
Okay, right. Any pretty straightforward, any comments or questions from the committee?
Hey, Jeremy. Thanks. That land's actually behind the house isn't pretty much unusable, correct?
It is. I mean, I haven't looked at it, but I think it's mostly hillside. Yeah, and the, the important part of acquiring it is that the city of Cleveland owns on either side. But if we ever wanted to put a trail trying to link some of the metro parks through that area, this is the last privately held piece between the kingdom and some of the metro parks. So that's why it's, it's a good time to pick it up.
Right, okay.
All right, go ahead, Miss Pucci.
That was my question, that it's basically unusable property for any other purpose.
Yeah, that's correct. And it didn't go, it didn't sell at share sale because of that reason. You really can't do anything with it.
Okay, all right, we'll just sit on it then. All right, and then lastly is Resolution 2021-18. And I'm assuming Jeremy, you'll want to address this one as well, authorizing the mayor to enter into a community recreation conservation project pass-through agreement with the Department of Natural Resources.
Yeah, this, the state of Ohio recently appropriated $100,000 towards the Kingdom Park Trail, this initial phase. So the funds that were appropriated by the state are just being administered through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And Exhibit A is the grant agreement between the Department of Natural Resources and the city. So this grant will fund the initial section of this trail going from Memphis by the fire department up north into the western part of the kingdom. So part of it will be paved and part of it will be non-asphalt. And so, you know, that this trail really kicks off that, or this grant really kicks off that initial investment in the trail. You know, additional funds will be needed to continue it, but, but this is the start.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any idea roughly when we would want to get rolling with this or be able to start with this? I mean, obviously, this has to go through, but, but after that?
Yeah, I think the idea is to try to get it done this construction season if possible.
Very good, very good. That'd be great. All right, any other comments or questions on that?
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, about how far will these funds get us, you know, into that area? And then also, are we eventually still looking at metro parks to take over the, basically the maintenance, like moving forward? Once everything's complete?
The, the first part of the question, it'll, it will get us the majority of that first section, the 100,000. There's going to be some additional costs due to engineering and then also construction maintenance. So I think the total cost is about 130,000, but that'll take us from Memphis. And I can send a map to council so you can see the whole, the, the first segment and then the continuation of the project. But it'll, it'll go just into that western part of the kingdom, so just down the hill. And then the second phase is really kind of a loop trail along the, the main part of that land. Speaking to the long-term plans with the metro parks, I'm not aware of that. I haven't been involved in any of those discussions. So Mayor, I, I don't know if you could speak to that or not, and if not, then we can look into it and get you an answer.
Thank you.
There's no.
Go ahead.
There are no long-term plans for the metro parks at this time. I mean, I think it's something that they would consider continuing to look at, but this is not in their, you know, plans, immediate plans for anything.
Thank you.
All right, very good. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Does anyone else on the committee have any to add for finance before we turn it over to Mr. Regus? Right, hey, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you. I have nothing for finance committee tonight. Thank you.
Oh, that was easy. All right, very good. Okay, anything else? All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Sorry, to adjourn, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Okay, let me just double check and make sure everyone's here. Sue, Harry. I think everyone's here.
I believe so.
All right, very good. All right, we'll go ahead and call the committee, the whole meeting to order. Mary Jo, can you call the role, please?
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Groddick?
Here.
Ron Van Kirk?
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Here.
Andy Selhertz?
Here.
Kathy Pucci?
Here.
Mary Bell Beer?
Here.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting, April 12th, 2021. Does anyone on the committee have any comments or questions on those? Make a motion. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the motion by?
It was Kevin.
Okay, thanks. To approve the minutes, Kevin Tansky?
Yeah.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
The only item we have on the agenda as far as our legislation this evening is Resolution 2021-15. And this authorizes the mayor to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the Cleveland Metro Parks Police Department. And Chief Melkey addressed this at our last meeting, basically just a name change in the Metro Parks Police Department. Everything really stays the same in regards to our mutual aid agreement with them. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Okay, we have Bowen with us again this evening, so Mayor, I will turn it over to you. And you can introduce them once again, and then we will have our discussion with them.
Sure, thank you, Council President Van Kirk. I'll turn it over quickly, but we're here to kind of look at the final site plans. And as you know, this is going to planning commission this week as well. And I know I saw most of you come up here to check out the actual outside material and take a look at it. There was some comments. I did pass on some of the feedback I did here to Robin, and I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing us to present a progress update on the Brooklyn City Center tonight. We are nearing the end of the schematic design phase. It's actually going to be delivered to the city and the rest of the team at the end of the day tomorrow. And that will include complete site work, 100% site work, so that we can move into the initial pricing phase where our estimator and Panzika, the construction manager, will be running concurrent estimates. We plan to be back before you at the beginning of June, June 14th, I believe is the date, where we'll be presenting project budget for consideration and approval. And I agree on for, I believe, three readings for that. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyle Hulot, our design director. He's going to start by giving you an update on the exterior elevations and materials. And we can, we'll go through that. I think we can take a little, we'll stop, he'll stop sharing it, and we can take any questions or comments that you want to discuss on that. And then we'll pull up the, the proposed landscaping plan and the planting palette, so you can get an idea of what's proposed for that. So Kyle, go ahead.
All right, so I will take you for a, a tour around the building, and I will call out and describe some of the materials that you saw earlier last week and kind of give you a little bit better idea of where those materials are going. So this is at the corner of the building, right along, kind of the view along Memphis. This parking lot over here would be the new parking lot and drive that, that serves City Hall and the police station itself. So starting up front, we've got a large plaza. As we come in here, and we'll have, the plaza itself is made up of pavers. And it designates a number of different kind of event areas, and we see this as a, an event space for, for the community and for City Hall itself, which has direct connection to the community room over here. From a material standpoint, what we saw earlier was, it's called a Roman brick. In this case, it was an extended Roman brick. It's a, it's a modern take on a, on a traditional material. So we've got, we've got that, that material anchoring the building here and providing an area for signage, but also creating these landscape walls in the plaza itself, and extending that material along and defining these areas in front of the City Hall itself. As we move to the entry of the facility.
Excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the size of the plaza?
Um, I, do you know on hand?
Um, let me pull it up real quick.
Okay, thanks.
I want to say it's around 1,500 square feet, just in this area right here.
It's about 1,500 square feet for the paper area, and then it's another 1,100 for the rest.
Okay, so we're almost.
About 3,000 square foot for just that portion of the plaza, yeah.
So that, that would be the event space there. The majority of the main side is made up of a curtain wall system within aluminum-framed curtain wall frames, and then obviously the glass framing. The City Hall offices would be the castel material. Again, it's a material that we see traditionally in these types of buildings, but done in a more modern way here as well. And then framing the police department entrance again is the castel with an aluminum storefront system. The actual entry into City Hall itself, which is this piece right here, would be clad in a metal panel. And that metal panel would also create the canopy that forms kind of the main body of City Hall itself. As we move on down the site into where the police department is, again, we're using the same kind of modern Roman brick. In this case, it's a slightly different color to call attention to the police department itself. And then their secure entry again has that metal panel, kind of setting up that same type of language that we see elsewhere above the entries. The garage itself again is that modern Roman brick. And here, we're using a translucent panel. This is going to create some really great daylight into the garage itself and make it a nice open feeling garage in there. And then the firing range itself, again, is clad in the brick. So moving on to some kind of more straight-on elevation views. So obviously, this is the main elevation that someone would see, the entry into City Hall, the entry into police. This is the secure police entry, and then the elevation along Memphis itself with the kind of that modern brick at the base forming the sign area, the castel up top for City Hall, and then the glass facade of the building department. This is the animal control area, again, using that same elongated modern brick. And that would be the same brick that is over here on this side. And as we come, some, some progress elevations of the back side of the building and then the north side. This up here is that translucent panel that'll let daylight into the garage itself. And then the kind of the mask, the rectangle of the firing range in front of that. Along the back side of the building, this is the Sally Court right here. This is actually the police jail and then the animal control area. And then this is into the police station, getting some natural light into that area, and of course, the, the back of the garage. And the entire building would be clad in this masonry. Again, it's timeless, modern material all the way around. So are there any questions, any comments?
I just have a quick question. The, the curtain wall that you have there in the front, the, is that, you said that's, is that aluminum or metal of some sort?
Yes.
What is the purpose of that as opposed to just having it all glass?
So it is an all-glass system. What we're doing here is we're adding some vertical fins to help with the glare as we are on the east side and help with kind of the sun control as well, but it is a full-blank system.
I have a question.
Yes.
Question that I have is your, the front of the building, the two entrances. Salt-wise, when salt is thrown, is it going to be eating that platform up? And if so, can a mechanism be put in there like they did with the new juvenile and also the federal building, where they have heaters under brick to melt the snow?
So yeah, so we're looking at two things. One, a kind of focused heat melt system. But we're also looking at porcelain pavers, and porcelain pavers are immune to the effects of salt versus a, kind of a standard brick paper. So yeah, we're very kind of, kind of, the abuse it'll take during the wintertime and wanting to make sure that material's going to last for a long time.
What is the longevity under those, if they heat those bricks, or I don't know what the, the name, what they call those, but what is the longevity of those heaters underneath there? Do they have to be replaced in so many years, or?
Um, well, we will verify. We're looking at two different types of systems. They have, you have, there's electric snow melting systems, and there's also, like I call, snow melting systems. Based on the limited area, we are leaning towards an electric snow melt system, but I will verify with our engineers the actual lifespan of those systems before we need to start to replace components.
Right, because I would imagine you can replace sections if they burn out. I know they work very well at the federal building downtown and at the juvenile. I mean, they really work really well. They don't have to throw salt. So none of that salt gets dragged into the, into, into the building.
Right, um, that's, that's one of the big benefits is that they, they keep the salt, they keep some moisture, some water from being dragged into the building, and we are looking at them for a limited area for just the main walk into the City Hall entrance and then over at the police station entrance as well. We'll get information on the, the longevity and the warranty periods.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I actually have a couple. You mentioned the possibility of porcelain pavers. Are they more slippery than the regular traditional pavers when people are walking on them when they're wet?
No, so they have a textured surface as well, something that's refined to a masonry paper. So they need the slip resistance. Again, it's, it's a material specifically made for exterior. It's, it's not, not quite like a traditional porcelain tile. It's actually quite thick. So it's really got some weight to it, which that thickness enables kind of the greater texture to keep people from slipping on it.
Okay, and what, what does the drainage look like in that, these paver areas? Where does the water go?
Um, we will have some yard drains, um, so yard drains, we will have drainage points in the plaza area. And there will be slight slopes to drain, to drain the water away from the main walkway towards the drainage areas. The pavers also will have, they'll be permeable at the joints. There'll be a standard joint that will allow moisture in, but the polymeric sand will keep weeds out. And there will be a drainage base underneath of them. They're set in sand, and they will leak the water out from below them as well.
Okay, and my last question about the front of the building is, if you could just shift a little bit, like further to the left, the window up top that's framed in black, what, what is that area? On the second, oh, no, that's framed in black, over, like, on the, yes, right there.
Yes, this is, it's a metal frame, and this window actually looks into an office.
Okay. I don't know. I guess I'm just, I don't know. I, I'm not an architect or a designer or anything, but I just feel like when you look at it, that it, it makes things look a little bit off balance just because there's only, like, one, and it's kind of anchored to the right, so just my comment on it.
I was going to ask, is there a way, like, like, next to it to have at least two windows there or something? I don't know what, obviously, the use is, or if it's that determined at this point, but I agree with Kathy. It looks a little weird with just one kind of off-center.
Yeah, we can definitely explore that and see what we can do.
And to go back to those curtains again, is there anything else that can be done on there? I feel like it, it takes away from that, from that all glass. Look, I mean, I understand the sun glare, you know, for the direction of the building is facing, but it almost, it almost looks like, where you're trying to be modern, but it looks like that's a throwback to like the 19, I don't know, 60s or 70s with those fins on there. Are those, are those, is it going to be bad if we don't have those on there, or is there something else that can be done? Maybe some type of tinting to the windows or something?
So we'll probably look at doing internal shades as well. One of the things that we're kind of exploring with, with the fins and what kind of drew us to it, I don't know if you noticed, but it creates a dynamic facade as, as you go from one side of the building to the other. So because the fins are at an angle, you get this very interesting effect that at certain points, you know, maybe some of that glass is more exposed versus less exposed, and it really creates that very kind of modern changing of a facade and kind of a dynamic quality to it. You'll notice the fins down here are angled one way, which makes it more open as you're looking at this angle. And then as you walk around to the other side, the fins on the upper side are angled another way. So it gives you a really kind of a whole new dynamic effect to that facade and starts to open up this area of facade. So that's kind of some of the thought process behind them and how they're working. So that's kind of some of the thought process behind them and how they're working.
I have a quick.
Is it more of an aesthetic look or is it actually, is it really needed for the sun?
It's both. It does help with glare as we are kind of at full glass on the eastern facade. So it acts as, it acts as both.
Okay, and I will, I'll agree with the ladies before me too. Oh, that was my, gonna be my other comment. That window does look kind of weird the way that it's just kind of put onto that one side over there. Even, I mean, I don't know what's, what other space is behind it, but even if you just made that whole area an open window or if you put a second one in, I think it would, it would make it look more balanced.
Is that the mayor's office?
Uh, yes.
Okay. What's on the other side or is that whole area on, in that area, one office?
We, no, I believe on the other side is a conference room. So, so what's going on and the way, I believe this conference room is set up and move around. So we've got windows to that conference room on this side. And then that way, this wall can be the presentation wall within the conference room. So if there's a wall mounted screen to it, you've got that solid wall on that side and then the windows on the opposite. And then there's some internal connections between the two.
I have a question on the fins.
Sure.
Those fins, I've seen them on buildings before. Do you have recent buildings where those fins have been put on, maybe at a larger scale or smaller scale? Of recent?
We can call these some presidencies. Oh, we did it against.
That was going to be my question as well. If you could like maybe point us to an example or two where we could actually see it in person. I think that would be helpful.
Yep, we can do that.
I've seen those fins on buildings before, but it was much in a much larger scale. So I don't know, being on a smaller scale like this, how it would look. But if you could come something up with a small scale, large scale and in between.
Yeah, we'll put together a list.
Yeah, as far as the materials go, I mean, I like it. I like the differentiation between the, the stone and the brick and the metal. I like that. Yeah, those, those things that I mentioned were my only concerns. I like the design, it looks, it looks sharp.
Thank you.
I passed on almost all these concerns, including that, the window. And the only other one that I meant, I mentioned or someone said was the actual brick type on the top. But I'll tell you, if, if there was another window up there, I don't think that brick type would be as much of a conversation. If there was two or three windows on that one area looking at the front. And I mean, that's, and if, if the concern was, I didn't realize it was because, you know, having a working wall, there is an option to move the conference room to an internal part and put another office over in that area. We can look at that.
Sure.
May I be recognized for a moment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks, I, I do agree that the window looks a little offset, but it makes perfect sense because we do need to think about the inside also. Maybe some sort of signage or logo would, that we could think about would definitely, I think, center it more. If something needs to go over there, it could be something more decorative. In that way, it would still maintain the wall on the inside, but give more of a sense of balance.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Okay, thank you folks, I appreciate that. Does anyone else on council have any questions for the folks at Bowen?
Does that finish their presentation?
Oh, I thought so, maybe not.
All right, we have one more item. We'll, we'll show you the planting palette briefly.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Sorry, I dropped that off screen. Okay. So I think everyone can see the, see the screen and see our colored planting plan. So this is preliminary. This was submitted with our planning commission to middle this past week. So we'll present this to planning commission on the sixth. All of the areas that you see colored in green here representing grass areas or areas with some type of plantings that will be new and affected by this project. The areas that currently have grass that are white around the rec center, they will not be affected by this project. They're white, they will be, remain as is. I'll zoom in. Just for reference, where we see all of the large circles, those are larger ornamental trees. Where we have this hatched area at these two parking, parking lots. And over along the west, that represents a, a visual screening with different shrubs and brasses and other perennial plants. And then you can also see the hardscape here where we've just talked about our, our paver area and our plaza, the small lawn area and the planters. So the general concept for the planting plan is we're looking at ornamental trees to frame the drive, the new drive and the new parking lot in addition to the screening. The trees proposed along the drive here will replace the existing trees due to the new layout of the parking areas and the curbs. We will end up doing, we won't be able to protect the roots of the trees and will do significant damage to them. So we're going to replace, replace them. The proposed tree is the, this autumn blaze maple over here on the left. And then also the Princeton elm. So you have a couple taller leafy trees. Those trees are used throughout the parking areas. And along the, along the road here, we add in another tree called the, the purple prince crab tree. So a flowering tree along the road and then, you know, to, to shield the parking areas. There will also be some oak trees in the, along the road as well. Again, it's a variety of trees, sorry. To provide a, I apologize, my screen's a little. There we go. To provide textural and visual variety. So the shrubs along the road there will include a mix, a mix of perennial shrubs and sureses. So you can see the different ones along here for lilacs, hydrangeas, mudle leaf viburnum. So a combination of long, short, leaves, lots of different color. So over along the west buffer for the residences, we will be doing again a, a mix of plants. And the concept for this is our landscape architect is working to make sure that there is near complete visual, visual screening throughout all seasons along here. The ornamental trees with these large circles will be strategically placed along with the garages that exist here. So where there's a garage, we'll have kind of higher plantings to take advantage of the garage itself as part of the screening. And where there are no garages, we'll mix in denser, lower plantings. So the Western arborvitae as well as, excuse me, the different, the viburnum, the two different types of viburnums, the dwarf lilacs. As well as the forsythia occurs over here. So again, it's a large, a large mix of plants along that area. And that dense, dense planting zone has gone to extend the full length of the new building. And then the secure parking area for the police where we have the drive and the kind of the most activity during the day. The planting beds up here will be a mixture of the various perennials you see here. Racin stage, daylily, cone flowers. All of these plants are selected based on their ability to be low maintenance for their, their continued shapes and foliage throughout different seasons. And to provide their natural species to the area. I don't know if there's any, any questions?
I like that there's a really good mix between the trees and the different types of perennials.
It looks beautiful. I think it's going to look absolutely awesome. So I like that a lot.
Any, anything else?
Is that, is that everything, Robin?
Yeah, that's all for tonight.
Okay, right, council, any other, any other comments?
I, I just have one question. When are we going to get to see, the mayor mentioned that there's like a view like going into the building and being able to see, you know, visually inside?
That's, that's coming up. That's our, our next step as we kind of complete the exterior design, we'll be moving into the interior. So then we'll start creating those same kind of three dimensional views that I showed for the exterior. We'll be able to walk into the building and start seeing those for the interior in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you. So you'll be back at another meeting with us then to show us that?
Yes, we will, we'll schedule another, another time to come in to review the interiors update.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Robin and company, appreciate it. It looks, it looks great. So thank you so much for your work on that. Any, any other comments or questions? And we'll, yeah, we'll set something up and see you guys soon. So thank you so much. Right, anyone else on the committee have any comments or questions before we adjourn this meeting? Mayor, anything else?
Uh, nothing from me, Jason or Chris. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Nothing here, thank you.
Okay, all right, then I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn, Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodek?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Okay, we will be back in five minutes for the start of council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, April 12th, 2021. Are there any comments or questions regarding these minutes? Make a motion that we approve.
Okay.
To approve the minutes, Kevin Tansky? To approve the minutes, Kevin Tansky, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki? Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
abstain.
Mary Bell Beer?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the public session. Mary Jo, has anyone submitted any email for, with questions or comments tonight?
I have not received one.
Thank you. We'll now move on with reports of committees, commissions and boards. Begin this evening with the finance committee. Uh, we met at 6:15 prior to the start of this meeting tonight, as we do for all regularly scheduled council meetings to discuss the following. Resolution 2021-16 is on second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with McBride DeOclarian for consultancy services relating to studying and drafting provisions of the zoning code. Uh, we had a representative from this company with us at our last meeting to discuss this. And of course, this is the rewriting of our zoning code that we've been talking about for quite some time. And uh, once they start their work, um, it'll take approximately 18 months to complete. And that is on second reading. Next is ordinance 2021-14, repealing and amending various sections of the codified orders of the city of Brooklyn. Uh, we talked about this at our committee home meeting last time as well. Uh, Mr. Butler is just updating some legislation to make sure that all of our ordinances and resolutions are correct and accurate. And so we will probably still make some more changes to this at our next meeting. And then we will vote on that. Two new items this evening that were discussed in finance, the first of which is resolution 2021-17. Uh, this is authorizing the mayor to enter into a pass through and sale purchase for a piece of property. Uh, that's on Apple Creek Drive. It's permanent personal number 431-17-116. Uh, this, the current owner of this is severely passed due on taxes. And so, and the foreclosure process on that, and the goal behind this is to purchase this property. Um, it's useless, pretty much useless as far as, um, for building anything on it. Uh, but it would be, um, a nice piece to have if we were able to do the connects with the parks and the metro parks. And so, uh, we are looking at, um, purchasing that. And then, uh, lastly is resolution 2021-18. And this authorizes the mayor to enter into a community recreation and conservation project pass through agreement with the Department of Natural Resources. And this is in regards to the hundred thousand dollars that we received in a grant. And this will be the opening phase of the trails that would head down into the kingdom. And so both of those items were discussed in finance. Uh, the finance committee meetings do take place at 6:15 prior to our council meetings. Right now, they're all being held online, but you're welcome to, uh, join us. And, um, again, they're at 6:15 prior to council meetings. With that, we'll move on with our recreation board report. Councilman Tansky.
Tansky, unmute yourself.
Mr. Tansky, here.
Sorry about that. If you're looking to get outside and enjoy some fun with your family and friends during the spring and summer months, please come to one of our following free events. May 26th, Stan Less, the movie. June 9th, music by the band Flipside. June 23rd, music by the band Funkology. July 7th, the Diamond Project Band. July 21st, Spies in Disguise, the movie. August 11th, Sharden Polka Band. August 25th, Diary of a Wimpy Kid, long haul movie. September 8th, music from Becky Boyd and the Groove Train. Driving movies will be in the St. Thomas Moore parking lot, 7:10 p.m. Registration required. Concerts will take place at the Grand Pavilion behind the city hall, 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. Please bring your own chairs, blankets, snacks. Social distancing required. Mask will not be required. Must stay within your group. The next recreation, recreation board meeting will be held on May 17th in the rec center meeting room, 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is our legislative update. Councilman Bell Beer. Mrs. Bell Beer?
You're muted, Mary.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. There has been a lot of activity at both the federal and state levels regarding the carrying and usage of guns. I had commented at an earlier council meeting regarding Senate Bill 175, the so-called duty to retreat or stand your ground law, which expanded the castle doctrine that Ohio had operated under, under since 2008. Essentially, Senate Bill 175 removed the requirement that one must attempt to withdraw through actions and or words before relying on deadly force in self-defense. We also have a new law in Ohio, Senate Bill 140, that while not a gun law per se, it is important to many Ohioans who also want to or already do carry knives. Ohio's carrying concealed weapons statute has long created confusion when it comes to carrying knives and other utility blades. Senate Bill 140 is known as the knife rights law. This bill, which gained full passage in both the House and the Senate, was signed into law by Governor Dewine on Jan-
I think we lost Mrs. Bell Beer. Or am I the only one not hearing her?
Oh, in 40-
Mary?
Yes.
We didn't catch, um, a little bit of the last part of it. For some reason, your microphone was on, but we weren't able to hear.
Oh, okay.
You said something about the knife law and then-
Okay, um-
Sorry.
The knife rights law, this bill, which gained full passage in both the House and the Senate, was signed into law by Governor Dewine on January 11th and went into effect on April 10th. Essentially, the law does two things. It repeals the ban on the manufacture and sale of switchblade, springblade and gravity knives, which are already legal to own in 44 states. This is expected to bring manufacturing jobs and industry to Ohio's economy. It clears up the confusion regarding the carry of any knife by defining a knife, razor, or cutting instrument as a deadly weapon or weapon, only if it is used as a weapon. This allows any knife to be carried concealed in Ohio. Thank you, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our planning commission, Councilwoman Grodick.
Thank you. Our next planning commission meeting will be Thursday, May 6th at 6 o'clock. This meeting will be in person at city hall and the public is welcome to attend. On the agenda will be a request from Total Image Solutions for two canopy mounted digital signs for a gas station at 90, at 4295 Tiedemann Road. A request from Blink Signs for a sign package for Red Krabby Juicy Seafood at 4754 Ridge Road. A request from Universal Sign System for a sign package at GFS at 10820 Brook Park Road. A request from Mick Elie, Elwe Properties LLC for a lot split and consolidation at 11400 Brook Park Road. A conditional use request for a car wash in a retail business district for Clean Express Auto Wash at 4630 Ridge Road. A request from Jason Felton for a preliminary site plan approval for a Clean Express Auto Wash at 4630 Ridge Road. A request from Jeff Flowers for a preliminary site plan approval for a Swenson's Drive-In at 7414 Brook Park Road. And the final one will be a request for Bowen for final site approval for the new city center at 8000 Memphis Avenue. Um, again, this meeting will be in person and it will start at 6 o'clock at city hall. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Sounds like a very busy meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Grodick. Um, the committee, the whole, met just prior to our council meeting, following the finance meeting to discuss the following. The first of which was resolution 2021-15. And this authorizes the mayor to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the Cleveland Metro Parks Police Department. Discussed this our last meeting as well. It's basically just a name change, uh, for the Metro Parks Police Department. Uh, the agreement that we have with them will remain the same. And then we spent the bulk of our time at our meeting hearing from Bowen, um, as they prepare, as Mrs. Grodick just mentioned, to, uh, present the final site plan for their approval at the planning commission. And they walked us through the 3D, uh, imaging and the materials that'll be, uh, the outside of the, um, facility will be made of, and also all the different, greenery and trees and shrubbery that will go around it. And so I would encourage you, if you, uh, were, were not on to watch the committee, the whole meeting, to go back and to watch that when it's posted on YouTube a little bit later on. And, um, and I think it's a very nice building. There may, there may be some minor changes made. Uh, but all in all, on the outside of it, it looks great. Uh, the next steps, of course, will be to start working on the inside of it as far as presenting that to council, what that's gonna look like into the public as well. And so we'll be hearing from, uh, Bowen here again, very, very shortly at a future meeting. And again, those meetings take place following the finance meeting, uh, before the start of all regularly scheduled council meetings. With that, we'll move on with our school board report from Councilman Bell Beer.
Thank you. The Brooklyn School Board District has completed a profile of a graduate as part of the strategic planning process. This was a pre-K to 12 process that developed six competencies that they want all Brooklyn graduates to leave once they graduate. Number one, the first one is care and self-awareness. Two is cultural acceptance and citizenship. Three is connection to community. Four is communications. Five is critical thinking and problem solving. Six is creativity and innovation. So hopefully by the students, by the time they graduate, they will be able to embody all these competencies. Also, the school district will be having contractors working in the area of Hurricane Alley to repair the parking lots and the fields. There will also be a virtual community town meeting with the superintendent, Dr. Ted Kalaris, Saturday, May 1st at 10 o'clock in the morning. And you can log into details. They'll be posted at www.brooklyn.k12.oh.us. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Beer. We'll now move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. I would like to say now, big, huge thank you to Brooklyn Service Department and the entire room getting all the fallen branches picked up after the snowstorm we had this past week. Storm left a lot of debris on the sidewalks and streets in the city. Did another great job with the cleanup. And also a quick thanks to Chief Milky on Ridge Road on the backup, trying to resolve that traffic, um, with Dunkin' Donuts. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up, Mrs. Grodick.
Thank you. Um, I would also like to echo Mr. Tansky's thanks to the service department. A, a tree fell, or not a tree, but a branch fell from my yard. I never even saw it was picked up so quickly. Um, all I saw were the spent blossoms that were there from the, from the branch. Um, so thank you so much for getting that taken care of. I'd also like to just mention a little show and tell. We haven't talked too much about this, but the, um, city of Brooklyn is sponsoring the 2000, uh, 2021 exterior home repair and bathroom addition grant. Those grants, those applications are due on May 17th. And, um, it takes a little bit of time and, and homework to apply. So if you're considering applying, just remember it's, it's due May 17th. I think this is our fourth year of doing this, and it's just one of my favorite projects that, that the city is able to do with the residents. So I hope we continue to increase even more applications for it. And lastly, I'd like to say to Mr. Bruzy, thanks for getting the park open. It looks great. Um, I'm seeing lots of positive comments on social media. I've seen some kids on it, even though our weather got a little chilly again. Some kids have been playing on it and it looks great. I love seeing all the recreational offerings. Mr. Tansky mentioned several. I'd like to, I'd love, so happy to see our sports coming back. It's, it's great to see some things going back to normal, even if though that they're the primarily outside ones. Um, I hope soon we'll get to see our senior center joining and offering our things too. Um, one question I had, if Mr. Bruzy's around, is I, I was wondering if the pavilions are open for rental this summer?
Yeah, the, the pavilions are open for rent. Uh, we cleared that with the health department, so we're pretty much full go with those. We've had quite a few bookings already, so.
Well, that's great to hear. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Grodick. Next up, Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. Earth Day was last week, but that doesn't mean we don't care about our planet the other days of the year. On Saturday, Councilman Selhertz and myself joined, uh, Girl Scout Troop 70616 um, in a community cleanup. And we had Randy and Jason Hammond out at Knights Commons as well. So it was great to get the girls. They were, um, young and teen, young through teenage years and their mothers and their troop leader Sandy were all out and, uh, cleaned up the park a little bit and it was a lot of fun. So it was, uh, supposed to be an on your own and we had an impromptu, uh, cleanup in person. So it was nice. And I do want to also thank Brandon from the rec center, um, for helping us get the bags. In the past years, my husband and I have had a truck and we're able to just load up the butt of his truck. And now that we no longer have that, we are relying on, um, our rec guys and sometimes our service guys to come out and help us dispose of the bags afterwards. So that work doesn't go unnoticed. Uh, thank you so much. And to anyone in our community who wants to join one of our future cleanups this summer, we'll have an official kickoff on Saturday, May 15th. To register, you can sign up on the, uh, Keep America Beautiful, um, website, volunteer.kab.org. Or you can email or call Andy or myself and all it entails is, uh, getting a reminder email the week of and a thank you email the week after. And Andy and I have a head count on how many people to expect. So that ends my report. Hope to see you guys this summer.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan Shaki. Next up, Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. As Meg mentioned, thank you to the Girl Scout Troop. They were working with us on Saturday and then they went to Estabrook. Actually did a planting of a garden over by Estabrook Pool Center. We do accept groups. They're actually a little bit outside of Brooklyn. Uh, we had Paul Davis Restoration Group last fall. Uh, this past Thursday, I had a call from another group of, uh, that has offices in Cleveland Akron. They were looking to do some volunteer work. They will try to figure out a date when they can show up. Also, if you're in need of community service hours for graduation, definitely more than welcome to visit us for an hour and two. We'll sign your paperwork. It's like, uh, Meg mentioned, volunteer.kab.org. Put in for volunteer opportunities, type in the zip code 44144 and you'll see where we're at. Other thing is tomorrow's Bubba's Yard is at, um, St. Elias Church in the parking lot. It officially opens at 3:30, but if it's set up beforehand, uh, they'll get started just as soon as possible. Get people in and out. There'll be two lines, uh, in the parking lot to keep traffic off of Memphis and hopefully speed things up. And the last thing I can finally hopefully nicely say is this afternoon from Real Term Energy, we got the final GIS audit report. Uh, Mr. Reguz and I each got a copy of it. We've got to look it over. We'll meet with Kerry Wilson sometime to go over it. And at a later meeting, uh, we'll present it to city council. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz. Next up, Mrs. Pucci.
Still muted, Kathy?
Yep.
I guess it's a trend this evening. Good evening. Um, I was not at the last council meeting, so I'd like to offer my condolences to Mr. Van Kirk and his family on the passing of his mom. Um, you've been in my prayers. And I also would like to thank the service department. We had a lot of tree damage after the most recent snowstorm. And they really did a great job taking care of, um, all of it very quickly. Some announcements, uh, from the Safe Roads to School Committee. The, uh, we have walking and rolling for the 2021 National Bike to School Week, which is the week of May 3rd. Monday, the theme is put a lid on it. Students are encouraged to wear their bike helmets and bike to school. Tuesday is transportation safety. Students, um- Students will write in chalk safety tips on the sidewalks. Wednesday is Let's Walk and Roll, and this is actually National Bike to School Day. This is generally the day where the kids get to walk to school and ride their bikes with our safety forces, and it's always the highlight of the week. Thursday is Community Bingo, and also Wear Your Favorite Sports Team Shirts or Colors. And Friday is School Spirit, Wear Blue and Gold. The Bike Rodeo is Saturday, May 8th, from 9 to 12 at the school in the blue and white lots. Parking will be available in the gold lot. And there are some differences this year due to COVID. The biggest one is that families have to preregister. And the reason we're doing this is so that we can stagger when participants arrive so that we're able to adhere to all the COVID protocols that we have to. The good news is that by preregistering, you will be able to enter the raffle for the bikes and bike helmets. There is a flyer that is going home with students. We'll still have the Bicycle Skills Course, the DJ. They'll be able to see some different safety vehicles. They'll be able to say hello to some of our safety forces. And there will also be preschool and kindergarten registration information and also information for Safety Town registration. And we generally have a number of bikes to give away for the raffle, so make sure you preregister for this event. Masks are required, and we will also be observing physical distancing. Another announcement, the 22nd Annual Big Creek Watershed Cleanup is Saturday, June 5th. Our location in Brooklyn is behind our fire station on Memphis. It's from 9 to 12 noon. Masks are required, and we will be observing social distancing practices. Wear long sleeves and pants, boots or work shoes are recommended, no open-toed shoes. Bags and work gloves will be provided, and children under 18 have to have an adult with them for supervision. Last week, council had the opportunity to go up to City Hall and view some of the materials that are going to be used in the new police station and City Hall. And then, as Mr. Van Kirk mentioned, this evening at the Committee of the Whole, we had a presentation from the architect on the facility focusing on the outside. As we move through this process, I'm very excited that we are finally, as a community, in the position to be able to bring this project to fruition, especially for the members of our Police Department, who have really been working in some very challenging, challenging environment for a long time. We are all just heartbroken at the killing of six-year-old Camer Bryant in our community. The taking of this innocent boy's life is just tragic. Please keep his family and loved ones in your prayers. And I also, of course, feel for our first responders. The mortal wounding of a child is the worst possible call they can ever have. I commend them for their response and also for quickly getting to the bottom of this situation. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up, Mrs. Bellbeer.
I remembered to mute. Yes, I too would like to say special thanks to our Police Department. I appreciate the Police Department, our administration, keeping us posted and informed this past weekend with all the, with this horrible, unfortunate, deadly event. The, our Police Department was so prompt and so efficient and so professional. They seemed to handle every situation so well, and we can truly be proud of them. And I ask everyone out there, say a special prayer for our policemen, because I can only imagine, when they deal with deaths of children, what they go through. I know my brother-in-law, Rich Bellbeer, our former mayor, being a policeman, and we were just talking about it not too long ago, how hard it is when you deal, when you come to a call with a child that is either hurt or is in dire emergency or choking or however, how that really affects you. And it does take someone special and strong to handle the situation. So let's say an extra prayer for them tonight, and God bless especially our Police Force. They're just great, great guys. Secondly, I too had a chance to go up to City Hall to see some of the material that they're going to be using on our City Hall, our new city center, City Hall. It looks, it looks beautiful. I'm not used to the colors, but I think, I think it's going to look great. And especially when we talked to Bowen tonight, and they explained how beautiful the foliage is going to be, and the flowers and the perennials. I think it's going to be absolutely beautiful. So I think we're so lucky, like Kathy said, that this is finally coming, coming to be. And if you get, you know, I'm so excited about it. Also, I'd like to say thank you, well, Happy Easter to our Orthodox friends. They're going to be celebrating Easter this coming up weekend. Although we may not share the same calendar, we do share the same meaning, religious meanings. And I'd also like to thank our, our Service Department. Without question, they do the most fabulous job. I've always said that. You know, I had a tree across the street, a brand-new tree, and it looked like it was, it was so bent over, I thought, oh my God, we're going to lose it. But it sprung right back. I was so happy to see that. But I did see the crews out there picking things up. They always make our city look great. And thank you, Service Department. And that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bellbeer. Just a couple of items that normally our Building Commissioner would go over, but that position is vacant right now. The first of which is the grant deadline for assistance with the home improvements. That deadline is May 17th. As of Thursday of last week, there were 84 exterior grant applications, six landscaping grant applications, and four bathroom grant applications. There's been, I think, at least two mailers that have gone out in regards to this. There may have been more, but I would encourage residents to take advantage of this. Of course, there are parameters, and those can be found on our website. Next is the Citywide Garage Sale is set for June the 19th and 20th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There'll be a banner placed across Ridge Road in front of there on Bedoff, by next to Bedoff Plaza, and also be an ad in the newspaper as well. The sign-up this year will be online, so you can go to our city's website, or you can call City Hall at 216-351-2133 to get put on that list for the Citywide Garage Sale. Again, that's June the 19th and 20th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. As far as the property maintenance street walks, Summer Lane, Winter Lane, Sunset Oval and Trail in Memphis Village South on the north side of Bedoff will be walked, as well as on south of Bedoff between Road on Road and Fairway Drive up to I-480. There's a 30-day deadline for violations, but extensions have been granted if you call the Building Department. So if you've been issued a violation, you can call the Building Department if you need more time to get that taken care of. And of course, home repair season is underway, and to make sure if you're doing the work or the contractor is doing the work, that you pull the permits that are required before the work is started in your home. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. This Friday is Arbor Day. We celebrate this every year. We are a tree city, and we're proud of that. This Friday, I will be welcoming students from St. Thomas More and Heritage Christian to plant some trees in our park. Just, you know, every year we do a proclamation, and I'm just going to read a couple snippets from that proclamation, because it is important that we continue building up our tree canopy. As we saw, our city was on the low end, and we've had a lot of trees that we've had to take out in the park because of disease, and we have to build that up. And John Verba and his team, Jerry Ashick, the arborist, are doing a great job. They're already working on Arch Mirror with our tree grant from the county, and we'll be adding more trees with a grant that Andy Selhertz passed on to me from UPS in the Keep Ohio Beautiful. So a little bit about why it's important for us to continue to plant trees. They reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs. They clean our air. They help clean oxygen. The trees are renewable resource that give us paper, wood for our homes, fuel our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values. They enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. So as we continue to tell residents the importance of keeping those trees on the tree lawn, I hope you keep that in mind. I know some residents don't like the trees, or they don't like how they drop things. I think our arborist and our Service Department has gotten better in planting the proper trees for tree lawns, so we can eliminate, you know, the repair of the sidewalks, and we've gotten better over the years. But it's important that we continue to add those trees and hope for a continued increase in property value, as well as good environmental outcomes. I want to thank Bowen tonight for their presentation for the new City Hall and Police Station, as well as GPD and Panzico for the work they've done. I want to thank my administrative staff, who've taken a lot of time to continue this project forward. All of the directors have taken part of this, but specifically Chief Scott Milkie and Lieutenant John Knapp have been at every meeting. The jail is obviously a huge concern for them to make sure that they get it right. So our jailer, Mike Bellina, has been involved in this, as well as our Lieutenant Cindy Ashweiler. So as we continue to make sure that we produce a building for our public that will not only serve our Police Department and our citizens to years to come, we understand how big this is for the city, and we're excited about the outcome, and we're excited to be able to serve residents better as we make sure that we make those important decisions and do a good job as best we can. So again, thank you to all of the internal staff. I know, I could tell you, it's like a second job going through this process. So I know what it's like for them, and I want to thank them for all the work they've done. A lot has happened since our last meeting in our city, in our state, in our country. The Chauvin trial, the verdict came down, and obviously, as everyone has mentioned, we had the shooting at Fairfield Inn this past weekend. One of those things I was proud to say at the state of the sitting, city this past year was that Brooklyn was not part of the 9% increase in violent crimes as compared to other cities in the state of Ohio. I'm not sure if we can, we will be able to continue to say that next year. I think we've kind of saw between what just happened at Texas Roadhouse and this, we might be joining those cities. But I think that's the nature of what's going on right now in the world with what's going on with COVID. I think there's been many changes, and I think we're going to have some lasting impacts for years to come. Court cases have been held up for months. I could tell you a story just today. There was 225 jurors summoned. Only 49 showed up today for court. They have high-level felony cases that are continuing to pile up, and they're not being able to get them through the justice system. So, you know, I think we're going to see lasting impacts in our court system and the holding up of cases. I think that our police departments are continuing to be cautious, as they should with COVID and the impacts of that, and as well as the increased mental health issues that are going around in our society as related to COVID and being stuck in houses for so long, or teaching kids virtually, or kids being stuck at home. And then lastly, the lack of interest of people wanting to go into the police service. So that's not just a Brooklyn thing, that's an everywhere thing. And state of Ohio, United States is continuing to try to drive home the importance of people going into that profession and the good people that still exist in that profession. But I think there's a lot of generalities, and people generalize from one incidence to an entire profession. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that we take what happened Saturday seriously, but understand this is happening everywhere. And I think that our Police Department and our Fire Department did an exceptional job. I got a update from Chief Milkie within 15 minutes of this happening. And, you know, today, what's happening in the world with social media, sometimes the chief, I was having a conversation with him, sometimes he'll see something on social media before he even receives the call. So within less than 15 minutes, he cannot be informed of something, and this wasn't the incidence in this case, but, you know, something through the blotter, and not all information you see on social media is accurate. People listen to what's going through the dispatch, and it's not getting relayed accordingly and properly. So just as you read social media, and I know when something happens in your city, you want to be one of the first people to hear. You want to know the outcome, you want to know who did it. But understand, we have to let the Police Department do their jobs. It is vitally important that we let them go through that legal process. We make sure that they're giving everybody their due process rights. And so sometimes they cannot release that information. So I just wanted to please just ask people to understand that the police need that room to be able to do their jobs, and they did an exceptionally good job on this case. And I think that a bunch of you said it well, please keep the firefighters and police officers in your prayers to have to go to experience like this, or with, you know, say the Cracker Barrel shooting, and see what they have to see. They're human. And so those lasting impacts and them thinking about their children or their grandchildren or their niece or nephew being in that situation, they have to deal with that for years to come. It just doesn't go away after the incident ends. It's something that they have to continue to deal with, and they have those thoughts in the back of their head. And we treat them for mental health here, and we feel like it's important to continue that in treating those, them for the vicarious trauma. You know, some say it takes a tough person, but even the toughest person can't take some of these incidents without that kind of treatment. So again, those members of our police and our Fire Department are in our prayers to have to go through that. And I was going to talk about hotels in general and the aspect of increased crime. It's a reality. Hotels do bring an element of crime. There is a flip side. We have to let hotels exist, because we all travel. We all have to have places to stay. We have businesses that depend on them, that have guests in our community. There's two sides to every coin. You know, but one of the questions is, you know, why did we add another hotel to our community? And I would say to you that, being on the Planning Commission at the time, I think those of you that were on there with me, I wasn't a huge proponent of adding another hotel. But I think this is a good time to call out, this is what's important of why we update our zoning code and what needs to be updated. There are decisions that are made in certain zoning areas where, once you open the door, you cannot close that door. You are giving legal fuel to those businesses to continue to allow certain types of businesses, even if it's not a conforming use and you need a conditional approval. So again, you know, as people look to, as we update our zoning code and understand the importance of why we need to look at our community and the current uses and what we want to see our community have in 10, in 20 years, this is the importance of updating a zoning code. If you are a person that disagrees with the addition of a hotel, then you should be in favor of looking and participating in a zoning code update. But again, you know, this is a business, and they don't wish this upon them to have this incident happen. So respect that they're doing the best that they can and function their business, and, you know, they don't want this to happen, and we don't want to have to respond to this. And it is a tragedy all around. And I would just like to say that I am praying not only for those police officers, but the victim of the family, those people that are not named, the grandma, the grandpa, the uncle, because they just lost somebody that they love, and it's a tragedy all around. There's nothing good that came from what just happened on Saturday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with director's reports. We'll begin this evening with our Recreation Commissioner, Mr. Bruzy.
Thank you. Just to have an update on Safety Town for everybody. So you might have noticed some pictures on Facebook of the Fire Department helping us construct some of our buildings. We have a few different groups working on them. We just dropped off some materials to the schools this week. The Theater Shop is working on a couple buildings for us, so just want to thank all the groups that have been helping us thus far. So the buildings will be complete within a week or two here. GPD is coming out this week to actually plot the course, so we'll have that painted within a few weeks here, weather permitting. The building should be placed by the end of the month, and then in June, we're going to start fine-tuning things, adding traffic lights, landscaping, things like that, some signage. We are, we have finalized class dates. The goal is to get those in the hands of the schools, either later this week or early next, so they can be distributed at the Bike Rodeo. so they can be distributed at the bike rodeo, as Kathy mentioned. We want to get those in the hands of the students and families as soon as possible. Registration for that program is going to start in June and the classes are going to start in August. So we're looking to have like five total classes over, over the course of about a three to four-week span. So things are coming together. Dan Meadows and I have been working pretty closely with the Police Department, Recreation Department, and the schools. So everything's coming together. Just wanted to give everybody an update, so we're, we're excited to get that program going. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brusie. Yes, it'll be good to have Safety Town. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
Hi, Jack. Who's going, you don't need to name the person, but are we going to have a teacher who's actually going to teach the curriculum? I know that the, our police and firefighters come in and supplement that. But what's the plan for who's going to do the teaching?
So Dan Meadows is actually the point person for that. He's, he's put together the curriculum essentially. That's all done and taken care of. He's going to be there for every class, doing the majority of, of instructing and with, with one other paid teacher. We're not sure where that person is yet, but Dan's kind of taken the lead on that, reached out to several other communities. And, you know, with some input from them and his past experience, he put that curriculum together pretty much on his own. And we'll be working with one other paid staff to implement thing, implement the classes among, you know, multiple volunteers every day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brusie. Appreciate that. Next up is our Finance Director, Mr. Raguiz.
Good evening. I'd like to provide a brief overview of the General Fund Financial Statement through the month of March. So through March, overall revenues were at 33% estimated amount, which is a promising sign. Overall revenues are 28% more than prior year. The major cause of this is income tax increase of over $1 million. Much of this is due to the non-recurring one-time revenue sources, as well as a 3% shift from Cap, the Capital Improvement Fund to the General Fund for the income tax allocation for this year. On the bottom half of the income statement on the commitments, overall commitments are 34% of the budget amount and 2% more than prior year, so I'm remaining pretty consistent with prior year. As a result, the ending unencumbered balance decreased approximately $249,000 to an ending unencumbered fund balance of just over $16 million. It'll also include additional analysis related to the estimated revenue loss as it pertains to COVID-19. So it has been a year since the statewide emergency has been in effect. So this is a year's worth of tracking estimated revenue losses. With a disclaimer there, income taxes revenue are ma, as you all know, are a major source of revenue. Generally is two months behind of actual receipts. So when an employee, when an employee remits their taxes in March, we generally get that money two months after in, in May, due to the timing as it relates to paying Rita and then Rita dispersing to the city. So overall, a loss, estimated revenue loss is approximately $2.2 million, of which over $1.9 million is general fund-related. Overall net loss, taking into account any of the, the revenue and the subsidies that we received from the government last year, overall revenue, overall net loss is approximately $1.2 million, of which general fund accounts for approximately $980,000. I've also, I've also included an analysis of our income tax distribution from Rita for April. So overall distributions are 7% less than last, last April, excluding non-recurring one-time revenue sources that we received either as part of this distribution or in April of 2020. We've actually received $127,000 more than prior year, of which withholding our most, our major revenue source as it relates to income taxes is up approximately $155,000 from last year. So a promising sign there. As always, we'll continue to analyze as we go forward on the income tax front. So that concludes my report for tonight. I'm not sure if there's any questions from City Council.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure you're following that there was a substitute bill. I don't have the number in front of me that was introduced to amend the original legislation. Okay, do we have any sense of if that's going to go anywhere or?
The mayor may have more of a sense than me. I don't know if it will at this point, to be honest with you. I don't know if the mayor wants to add any comments on that.
No, I mean, we're watching this closely. I, you know, I watched the entire Ways and Means Committee for the last bill. And there's still a lot of political jockeying going on right now. And what's happening right now is they're trying to meld this in with the budget and having a decision with the budget. So we all know this is gonna, there has to be some kind of outcome come August. And I, I think right now, it's just a going back and forth between people playing different bills against each other. And we don't have a sense of where the outcome is going to be. But what we've been hearing over and over, it's not going to be as bad as the worst-case scenario bill that we've seen on the table.
I guess it, it just seems like, from my perspective, I just don't know if some of the legislatures in Columbus really understand the devastating impact that this is going to have. And, and, and I mean, not just on the individual communities, but the whole ripple effect.
I, you know, watching it, I don't, I agree with you. But they, you know, there was a comment by the Chair of Ways and Means that said, they're doing cities a favor because the court's going to come up back and say, to pay back those taxes anyways. Well, you know, I don't know why they're speaking for the court. I don't know if that would be the outcome, but I think that's the gist. People are saying, well, let the court decide what you're going to decide. So we'll see what happens. According to a lot of our state reps and our state senators, even Republicans from up here, they understand how this would impact communities. This isn't a partisan thing. This isn't a Democrat thing. These are a lot of Republican communities that would be impacted greatly up in this region and in Columbus and down in the Cincinnati area. So, you know, hopefully they could understand that unless there's some kind of, you know, time for people to adjust to whatever that lasting outcome is, you know, there's going to be a lot of hurt going around.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You go ahead, Mr. Butler.
Thanks. I think the mayor's accurately summed it up, but I'll just add that the list of opponent testimony is very, very long with respect, especially to this new substitute version of the, of the bill that's pending in the House Ways and Means Committee. The list of proponent testimony is very short. However, those proponents are organizations that have traditionally carried a lot of weight in the, in the General Assembly, the Ohio Society of CPAs. I think possibly the Business Roundtable. I don't want to misspeak, but it's a Chamber of Commerce-related organization. So, you know, that, that, that is rather telling. The Ohio Society of CPAs was initially opposed to this legislation when it was introduced. And then it became favorable to it once it was modified in a way that we believe is just horribly detrimental to municipalities. So we'll have to continue to keep an eye on it. And, and believe me, I'm doing the same thing. I know that those of us in City Hall are and, and will continue to keep you close to that.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. Raguiz, is that everything?
That is all for tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Any questions for Finance Director? Okay, we'll now move on to legislation portion this evening. The first three items are from our previous meeting or our second reading. The first one is Resolution 2021-15, authorizing the mayor to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the Cleveland Metro Parks Police Department. Resolution 2021-16, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with McBride-Dell Clarion for consultancy services related to studying and drafting provisions of the zoning code following the city's adoption of the master plan. Order is 2021-14, repealing and amending various sections of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn in order to conform to the, to the code, or excuse me, to conform the code of the city's updated classification plan and collective bargaining agreements. And then two new pieces of legislation, both on first reading this evening. Resolution 2021-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a pass-through and a sale, purchase, and development agreement with the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation for the purchase of certain real property known as VL Apple Creek Drive, permanent parcel number 432, 43117116, and declaring emergency. And then Resolution 2021-18, authorizing the mayor to enter into a community recreation-conservation project pass-through agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Does anyone else on council, the mayor, or any of the directors have anything they'd like to add?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brodic?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Matt Ryan Shaki? Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed evening.
You too.
Thank you.